It appears fine, yep.
We're missing, yeah. Elise and Don, that's good. Don, make us hear some even. One, two, three, four, five, six. What's that? Oh, that sounds crazy.
I mean, that's unbelievable.
Shameful.
It's shameful. My group.
Welcome to August 21st, 2024's regularly scheduled school committee meeting for 6:30. We'll salute the flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Conway.
Here.
Mr. Rossi.
Here.
Ms. Doherty. Mr. Lay.
Here.
Ms. Martin. Mayor Rook.
Here.
Mr. Bahu.
Here.
Sixth president when absent.
Special Law of Business, Section 3, 3.1, Spotlight on Excellence. Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. School committee members, six principals accompanied Assistant Superintendent Wendy Crocker to a conference called the United Conference in Nashville. Two of the people on that trip were actually part of the conference and were invited, based on the work in their schools, to present at the conference and receive national press because of it. One of them is David Anderson, the other was Wendy Crocker from the time that she was principal. David Anderson was meant to present tonight. He had a death in the family. And so if you allow, we will have him present on a different night. In the meantime, two other principals who were involved in the conference can update you, and they are Matt McLean from the Bartlett School and Kim Clemens from the Bailey School. I'd like to invite them to speak.
Good evening.
Good evening. I want to start by thanking the school committee and the superintendent for allowing us to participate in the United Conference in Nashville and for having us here tonight. My name is Kim Clemens. I'm the principal of the Bailey Elementary School. The conference was an excellent opportunity for us to network with colleagues from across the country and to see what new and innovative ideas they brought to the conference. We were able to bring that networking back to us with the We Women in Educational Leadership Group that we are forming that has over 35 interested participants, and we will be tentatively meeting on September 16th to start that networking. We also had a chance to discuss the different types of work that is happening in our schools and brainstorm how we may be able to bring those ideas back to our schools. The United Conference inspired many of us to showcase the excellent work that's happening in Lowell, like Wendy and David were able to, and I'm going to allow Matt to take a moment to talk about their session.
So I was fortunate enough to go to Assistant Superintendent Crocker Burge and Mr. Anderson's presentation. I know they're going to present it, but just to give you a sense, we don't actually go on a lot of these conferences, so having the opportunity to go and just mingle with other principals, for me, was just an amazing experience. I met people from all over the country. You know, I rode in elevator with a guy from a school outside of Anchorage, you know, that I could talk with, and just connecting with people all over the country. And every session, including the one from the, you know, our Lowell representatives, were jam-packed, filled with people. There was a lot of energy. Just to give you an example real quick on how this will, like, impact our practice. I'm the principal of the Bartlett, which is a pre-CADA 8, and writing is always one of the most complex things teachers have to teach. It's very hard to get teachers to change practice, for teachers to get kids to reach, you know, high levels or the standards they want. Writing is just one of those things that teachers spend a lot of time thinking about how to do right. So I made a point, because writing is something we're focusing on, you know, along with a lot of things, but of going to a conference from a woman named Liz Garden, who is actually another Lowell, not Lowell, excuse me, a Massachusetts principal, and she gave very concrete suggestions on how to work with staff to get them to think about writing and really how to make it more fun for kids, like how to meet the same standards, but in a way to remember that kids are fun and how to promote that, you know, kids want to have fun, and how to inject that in the classroom. And she presented a lot of ways of how she models it with staff first, how she gets staff to think about writing in new ways, and then shared concrete examples of how then the teachers took it into the classroom to really transform writing in their school. So now as a principal, I can take that back to my school. And, you know, you have to be careful about just taking every idea and throwing it into the classroom, but for me, what it did, it kind of reminded me that, like, in this very hard work we're doing of trying to improve writing scores, you also have to keep it fun and that there's a way to do both. And so it was kind of a, you know, for me to kind of reignite, to remind me of the basics and kind of reinvigorated. So this is really, I think, the second conference I've gone to since 2011, since I've been here in Lowell. And it was a great experience, and I do think it is something that despite it being a cost, there is a huge benefit. So that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you. One of the ideas I was able to bring back was brain-based learning strategies for our youngest students. You know, since the pandemic, we've seen children needing more social, emotional support, and the brain-based strategies helps students, helps us move children from having those strategies be extrinsic to intrinsic. And we want them to use those strategies when they need them and not rely on our support to calm them down and help them feel better. We want to make sure that they're powerful and can move forward with those strategies. So those will be some of the things I'll be bringing back to my school. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, it's a super time.
I'd just like to add, in case it wasn't understood, the principals took their own free time in the summer and volunteered to go. It was not during school time. They gave up their summer vacation time to go to the conference. And then the second point, that each of the principals presented to their colleagues last week at Leadership Academy, so that all principals in Lowell benefited from the programs that these principals brought back. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Moving on to Section 4. We have approval of minutes for multiple meetings. I'll do them all at once and then make one motion. 4.1, approval of the minutes of the special meeting on July 25th, 2024. Approval of the minutes 4.2 of another special meeting on July 25th, 2024. 4.3, approval of the minutes of the special meeting on July 31st. Approval of the special, 4.4, approval of the minutes of the special meeting on July 31st. 4.5 and 4.6, approval of the minutes of the special meeting held on August 12th, 2024. Motion to set a place on file by Mr. Lay, seconded by Ms. Martin. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Five, permission to enter, 5.1. Permission to enter, August 21st, 2024. The motion to approve the permission to enter by Mr. Rossi, seconded by Mr. Bahu. Questions? Roll call.
Mr. Conway.
Yes.
Mr. Rossi.
Yes.
Ms. Doherty. Mr. Lay.
Yes.
Ms. Martin. Mayor Rook.
Yes.
Mr. Bahu.
Yes.
Five yeas, two absent.
Section 6, memorials. Kevin E. Harris, custodian at Lowell High School and U.S. Army Vietnam Vet. Please, Dr. Chamber. May he rest in peace. Moving on to motions. 7.1 by Mr. Conway. Request superintendent to present a report on the readiness of the state, of the start of the school year 2025, 24-25 at Lowell High School, seconded by Mr. Bahu. Mr. Conway.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the superintendent. We've received a number of calls, I'm sure, about whether the school, in particular Lowell High, would be open, because people drive by and see that, you know, that seems like it's in turmoil, shall we say. So, I mean, we don't obviously know what's going on inside, so I'm wondering if you could take a few minutes here just to, you know, give some comfort level here to staff and also to students and parents that we are going to be ready on the opening of school and also further down the road, maybe the next school committee meeting, you can come in with a more detailed report after everyone gets in there, into the school, and we see, you know, the pluses and minuses. And also, by the way, somebody pointed it out, and I know it's, I hear, I just said the Lowell High, but, you know, I'm sure that other people are concerned about some of the schools. The Shaughnessy Roof, I went by there, and I'm not a roof man. I have no idea, but I will tell you, the roof wasn't on when I went by a couple of days ago. So I said, I don't know how, you know, I'm just worried about heavy equipment and so forth with kids coming in. And if you could address that for, you know, for a couple of minutes here, just to, again, have a comfort level for us.
Should we go?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Conway. I'm happy to discuss it. I'd also like to point out that DPW Commissioner Paul St. Seer and Ricky Underwood, our own Director of Operations, will be here at this meeting in time for this Section 8.1 for facilities updates. So I think your question warrants a great deal more detail about this construction projects than I will be able to give you, but I'll say this much. I've been to Lowell High School a number of times over the last couple of weeks. It is going to be, going to be, a really impressive project. I think people will love being in the new building. We have been very concerned for weeks about being ready for the opening of school. And so with the support of the city manager, we had required the OPM, his name is Jim Dowd, to list every single item that needs to be done at Lowell High, including cleaning, in preparation for the opening of schools. They then organized it day by day into every task that would be completed every day, and they give the city manager and I a written update at the end of each day. So I could find it, it's in my email, right? But so far, over the last several weeks, this email is very heartening. Each item that's been listed for each date is crossed out as it's completed as we get closer. And as I've walked Lowell High, yesterday, I think was my most recent visit, it's noticeable how the place is coming together. So for example, rooms that are no longer needed and near the construction are completely cleaned, professionally cleaned by an outside company. The doors are closed and sealed and they're marked off, so they won't be entered until the students, until the teachers arrive on Monday. What I'm getting at, Mr. Conway, is that in the preparation of Lowell High School has been laid out in a very detailed fashion, and it's been going to plan. So we have confidence, great confidence, that we'll be ready for students on Tuesday, before that, teachers on Monday.
Just one other quick point. I know that there can be a concern, and I've lived through three of these already. And what happens is, you know, you've got that checklist when you go in. I don't care whether, any kind of new construction, whether it's a new house or a new school or whatever, that there's things when we look around and say, oh, that's wrong, or this needs to be fixed and so forth. And I think it's one of the concerns, especially when I talk to some veteran people, because they say, yeah, well, you know, you know the way that was supposed to be fixed, and then look, you know, down the road, it hasn't been fixed. For example, in the gym, from what I understand, the roof has been leaking. And they were told two years ago it was going to be taken care of. Or the elevator, apparently they had to call the fire department on a couple of occasions, because that wasn't working. So, or it wasn't working the way it was supposed to be. So any of these things that we have to fine-tune, I think that what we have to do is have that follow-up to make sure that the problem is cured, instead of kick down another year or two years or whatever. All right?
I agree. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion passes. 7.2, Mr. Conway. Oh, fair, Mr. Lay, go ahead. I apologize.
Thank you. I had submitted a similar motion, but my motion, but I didn't see it on the agenda. But my motion was for general, overall, how ready we are for school opening. And you know that the city had been working on Patucketville Elementary School, and just want to hear what you know. Overall, are we ready to open school?
So I just heard from Mr. Underwood. He's parking his vehicle right now. He'll be in. And Mr. St. Seer is also about five, 10 minutes away. So they're ready to answer any questions that we have concerning the school buildings. They thought to be a little further down the agenda than, you know, we've been fast so far, Mr. Lay.
All right. Thanks.
All right. So when they get here, we can go back to Mr. Conway's. Oh, here, here we go, here.
I have this little motion on, too.
Yeah, so we can take them all? All right. So we can do 7-1. Mr. Bahu's is... 7-4. And Mr. Rossi, which one's yours? 7-7. Okay, you already did 7-1. 7-4 by Mr. Bahu. The superintendent submitted a report to the school committee on the work that has been completed and what the ongoing remediation process is at the Patucket Memorial Elementary School, seconded by Mr. Conway. And then 7-7 by Mr. Rossi. Request superintendent to report on the summer school improvements in regards to the buildings and what, if any, ongoing construction could impact students, staff and parents this upcoming 24, 25 school year, seconded by Mr. Lay. I believe we have a speaker first.
Paul Georges.
Yes, Paul Georges, President, UTL. Deeply concerned about the Patucket Memorial School. This is chronic. This has gone on. There are newspaper articles from 15 years ago talking about the mold problem there. The other part that concerns me is, we had that same problem just about a year ago. That school opened a day late. Teachers couldn't get into their classrooms, prepare their classrooms. Additional burden for them. They had to wait until it was okay and cleared. Even in the report that I saw today, kind of indicates, there's really no, the way I read it, was no clear guidelines or what constitutes mold mitigation. It's absurd. And I'm not, nobody gets guilty of this. It's the city of Lowell's building. It's not the school department's building. The school department isn't in charge of those buildings. Same thing with, and how much money was spent last year for the mitigation? Because it happened ongoing through the year. There were other times they had to bring in whoever the job or was that came in to clean the place again and again. If it's chronically problematic, the city needs to do something much more drastic. When is it ever going to end? That's just money being poured out the window, again and again, and causing a lot of anxiety, particularly with the staff. And if I had kids there, I'd be very concerned. I got another question, though, going along with, that's a facility. School department, the city is totally in control of that and is totally responsible for the status of the building. Not the school department, yet the school department ends up picking up the bill all the time. My understanding is, last year, when that came in, the city said it wouldn't pay for it, for the cleanup. Why not? We're tenants. They own the buildings. How much money has been spent just in the last two years on modular classrooms? Because there's no planning or foresight about what you're going to need in the community for facilities. I mean, I totally agree with buying the parochial school. The John Doc made sense. Made sense probably to buy the other two that sold before that. Would have made a lot more sense, because it's cheaper to fix what's there than it is to start from scratch. However, you know, we're in negotiations at this point, and it seems to be that a lot of money has run out of here for things that aren't our responsibility. And I mean "our" meaning the school department's responsibility. When's it going to end? When are the school committee going to say, no, we're not paying for eight or nine more modules? Two modules out of Colley Stadium. A parochial school is supposed to be fit and operating within a couple of months, when, as Mr. Conway said, I agree with him 100%. You've got elevators in existing buildings that haven't been taken care of for years. Why would you trust that? Why would you trust that the building you paid for, came out of your budget, is going to be maintained better than what we have now? This is upside down. We should not be the fat and cow that ends up being utilized by the city to balance its books. There's got to be a stop to it. And we, I know, because we can't deal with, we can't even negotiate class size, which we'd love to do, because we don't have enough classrooms. Right? How do you improve the quality of life for those kids, especially after COVID, where we could have used a plethora of school psychologists to help those kids deal with that reality? The city is building itself on the back of kids. You have to look at it that way. Because if you don't have the money to give the additional supports, it's because you're spending it on something you don't need to spend on if you just say no. It's that simple. I would encourage you all, and two years ago I was here, right through the summer. Every time there was a motion for expenditures, I argued against it. And very often, you folks said, okay, don't, we're not going to spend it. Sooner or later, it gets through the wormhole someplace, and it ends up being paid for by the school department. Over $9 million, I believe, in modular classrooms over a two-year period. $2.4 million for a parochial school that needs to be, I don't know, needs to be refreshed so that it's capable of handling special ed students. And all that time, you end up with larger class size, end up with a shortage of special ed teachers, SLPs, other professionals that support kids directly. The priorities have to be reset. And I hope every parent out there that hears this will put it in their mind that they have to demand that the highest priority should be the education of kids in those schools. Not taking the monkey off the back of the city because they don't want to have to pay for it. I want to know who's going to pay for this mitigation right now at the Patucket Memorial. I think I have a certain amount of resentment if it ends up the city does what it did in the past. We're not paying it. Just saying, we are not paying it. Stand up to them. Act as advocates for the kids. Don't let them get away with somehow weaseling you folks into taking money to came as the Student Opportunity Act and other Chapter 70 expenditures and use to cover their backs by buying facilities, whether, I don't know what part of a modular classroom is in a facility. It certainly is. That's totally the responsibility of the city, and they're not living up to it. Thank you.
We have here Mr. St. Seer, the DPW Commissioner, and Mr. Underwood, the Director of Facilities. John, you want to come up and discuss the partnership between the city and the schools? True partnerships.
Good evening, everybody. So I'd like to iterate, I mean, we share the concerns of Paul Georges, the teachers, the staff, the students. And I know Paul St. Seer and the city has taken this seriously. We've taken lots of steps, moving up to this date, to try to rectify this. We did a building forensic study last year. It was inconclusive, because we haven't got the, all of the facilities, I'm sorry, the infrastructure in the building corrected yet. We expect that to be completed by October with the new chiller in the building. There's been a lot of mechanical upgrades done to the system. There was absolutely mold in the building. We know that from the testing results. We had that. The level was much, much lower than we had seen in the previous years. I don't think anything's acceptable. But so on October 7th, I'm sorry, August 17th, I got an email from the custodian there saying that there were signs of mold. I immediately called Paul St. Seer. We mobilized on the school and started making plans to mitigate it. It was roughly four, five classrooms in very small spots of mold in one classroom and some other spots in the other. It wasn't as severe as it was in the prior years. The city is paying for all the mitigation and the air quality testing at the school right now. So to date, we've had Mil City Environmental show up at the school, look at what was going on, set up the containment. look at what was going on, set up the containments in the five classrooms that we were concerned about. They cleaned it, it was completed today. We had them spray, capsulate, spray all of the ceilings and walls in those rooms. Tomorrow we have a EFI Global, we've had a lot of communications and back and forths with on this. They'll be there tomorrow to do air quality testing. And, you know, those five classrooms won't be in until we get a clear clearance on those rooms and it's safe to go into. We do take it serious though, and we're doing, we're doing everything we can for this. And we don't really have the answers for it, and according to the building forensic, we may not get full answers until all the mechanicals are finished. There's a new chiller program that has been going on. And these things, they take a lot of time, between design, procurement, bidding, et cetera. So we expect that to be completed in October. Until then, and to the safety of the building, you may remember, and to those who don't remember, we continued with air quality testing every month throughout the school year last year, after summer. We didn't think we were going to have to do this year, that again this year, but we've made plans to continue that after we do today's, tomorrow's testing. So we are asking that the teachers don't go in those rooms until we get a clearance. And we know it's safe and the mold has been mitigated, and you know, the levels are, you know, below the standards of the outside air temperatures and mold spores. But we certainly do take it, you know, I certainly take it serious. And that's the reason why we're not letting anybody in there. On the first day that we seen it, we went in, myself and another custodian went in, and we did a simple wipe down with a detergent that was specifically for mold, much like you would in your bathroom or anyplace else that you see mold and mildew thing. And it wasn't a, because I know there was some concern from the teachers that we were cleaning. It was not the clean, it was just there to try to stop it from spreading and get a jump on, you know, the situation. But I mean, I'm happy to answer any other questions that I can on the situation. But I can assure you, nobody will be in that building and those classes until we know it's safe to do so.
Mr. Bahu?
Rick, Mr. Underwood, I was in the Patataville Memorial School today. And I saw Mill City Environmental did do their remediation efforts. And as I got to speak to the principal, she's keeping her whole staff out of that building until after the mold testing is done. Now, the teachers are asking to be in there Thursday to set up their classrooms and, you know, prepare for the school year. And she, you know, basically has to stave them off and says, "No, at very best, we can be there Friday." However, I also know that, you know, the mold testing will not be conducted until tomorrow. It takes at least 24 hours to get the mold tests back. So, you know, realistically, as far as I'm concerned, I don't think that we could even get the teachers in there on Friday. Because, you know, the principal says, you know, "We have to make sure it's safe for everyone," just like you're saying, has to be, they need to be safe for not only the teachers, but also the students. And, you know, how come this wasn't sort of looked at a month ago? It seems like, you know, we had this issue last year. And then on April 13th or 14th, finally, you know, we had the mold company come in and do their test, and then begin to start developing a plan in order to get your Patataville Memorial up and ready for the school year. Maybe help me out with some of those questions?
Yeah, so, it's my understanding that we'll have results back for Friday. We rushed them overnight, samples to the analyzing company, and we will have them back by Friday. Unfortunately, that doesn't give them much time. But it's not unlike, and I'm not making excuses, but it's not like, much unlike any of our schools right now. We've been keeping teachers out of a lot of our schools right now because of the summer school program that we ran at every school this year. We're down to the wire at a lot of our schools. So we're getting those complaints from, not just the Patata Memorial, from several different schools. We're just not ready. In the nine years I've been here in this thing, we've never not opened a school, schools on time, ready, bark mouch, flowers, you know, et cetera. We've been ready. This is a very different year this year. We ran the biggest summer school program we've ever ran before. We had accelerated academy, right after that, we had CTI and our programs. We had four MSBA projects that required us to, three of them that required us to close the schools for roof projects, I mean paving projects, and so. It's been a very difficult year. The Patata Memorial is just one of the schools that, you know, the teachers are unhappy with not being able to get in there. And, you know, and I do apologize for that. But we need time to clean the buildings. You know, we want them ready for the, you know, for the parents, for the staff, and the children to be perfect. So again, we'll have air quality tests done, results back by Friday evening, if not sooner. We can't do, we can't do the air quality testing until they're done with the mitigation and give it a little bit of time for everything to settle. What we did though, through this year, that was different than our last year with Servpros, we had the rooms, trying to think of the word, capsulated. So they did a clear capsulation on the ceilings, on the walls. We covered all the blackboards, we covered all the books, and then we capsulated it all.
And I saw all that today, and it looked, you know, very clean. And I asked where the spores were and so on and so forth. However, this is, again, something that's been ongoing ever since last year, if not years before, as Mr. Georges went ahead and touched on.
No, absolutely.
And for us to sort of wait for maybe the city council to make a motion and then have somebody in the building to look at it and then to begin to sort of, you know, get that school prepared when we know there's clearly an issue that's safety and, you know, highly concerning to parents, teachers, anybody that walks through that building. You know, this is not about, you know, you or crucifying your department. This is really about staying on top of something that can realistically be toxic. And we have to really put our best foot forward because it's an ongoing issue.
If I could just add to that, you know, to your question, we did keep an eye on it, we really did. We had air conditioners, you know, running continuously, we had some dehumidifiers in a few of the classrooms. We've put dehumidifiers in all the classrooms now, in that wing of the building. But we absolutely, we really did keep an eye on it. And that may be one of the reasons why we found it so quick and the level of the mold spores that we were looking at were, you know, minimal compared to what we've seen in the past. And sometimes it's hard to keep an eye on a building when you've only got custodians in the building and they're working from one room, you know, continually through the, you know, they may, they may do room 100 in the beginning of the summer. And because of the busy schedule and trying to get everything, they may not get back to that room, you know, till the end of the summer, you know, when you're going back to dust things and wipe things. But we did, you know, keep a good eye on that. I had visited the school many times, many times throughout the summer.
I heard you were there this morning.
Al Luna, the HVAC specialist, had visited that school many times throughout the school. And we've had, we've had contractors in the building working on the HVAC systems and air handlers on the roof pretty much throughout the summer in the school year. So it's, it just, it popped up, you know, in a matter of, you know, a day or so, from what I understand. And we, you know, we took immediate action, no excuses, no level of mold that's acceptable. But, you know, we really did try to keep an eye on it. And we tried to, you know, get in there as soon as we, immediately when we seen it.
Thank you, I think, you know, I know it's the city's building, so if we could maybe have Mr. St. Seer maybe sort of touch on that as well. Of course, we would like to talk about all the stuff that's been done for the schools, whether it's roofs or boilers and such as well. So, yes, Mr. St. Seer.
Thank you, good evening, everyone. So I'd just like to echo a lot of what Rick has said. And I've got to also say that we spent an awful lot of time at the Patataville. We were there many times a week. We had several different staff members who are going through the school, working on HVAC components. And with that, every time they went, they were scouring for that kind of thing to see any kind of evidence for it. So this was kind of a bloom that comes up, and that's the way mold can work, that you can, you know, in a matter of a day or two, all of a sudden it'll start to appear. And so I got to be really clear that, you know, compared to other years that we had, that we had, it was going down hallways and across everywhere, it was amazing. This is not the case for this. This was really concentrated into five rooms and small areas by and large. And so it came up last week, we acted on it immediately. We would have done that if it happened in July and it was observed. We've been paying attention to it the entire time. There have been many components of the building, HVAC components, that have been retro-commissioned, controls added, you know, things that the building has not had. And unfortunately, just due to the lead time that goes on with chillers, it's a 30-week lead time in getting through that process and design and all of that. This isn't, you know, something that we nickled and dimed. It's the entire, all of the components that will lead into that system so it's successful. The air handlers are going to be working, you know, the way that they should. They've gone through all of the univents. There's been a considerable effort that's been put into it, in particular for the issues that are going on there.
Mr. Conway?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, I appreciate your being here, both of you.
Gladly.
Just a clarification on a couple of things here. What's the time, how long does it take to get results after testing is done?
So they can be speed processed through, it's usually about 24 hours from the time that they'll take those tests and we'll have those.
Are there different types of test?
Well, yeah.
Or different levels, or whatever you might want to call it? I'm not exactly sure how to word that.
So they're really taking a measurement? Yeah. I would say that the gist of the test that we're taking here is actually to measure what could be there, the evidence of what's there. And that's what it's trying to, it will try to, to collect any specimen that's there and.
So is there one test that's better than another test that can help find the problem quicker or magnify it?
That's a good question, I'll get an answer for you for that.
Now, the other thing, when you just mentioned the five, I think it was five rooms, was there any speculation on why it's just those five rooms? What's going on in those rooms that is different than up the hall?
Right, so it could be something as simple as the right conditions, the right humidity, and some residue, something that the mold is going to be able to feed on. And so that could be an area that's, you know, it's very typical, I mean, the students, it's a normal thing. They oftentimes they have, you know, breakfast in classrooms or things like that. There's the opportunity for, and teaching yourself, I'm sure, that area above a waste barrel, you know, that wall tends to get an awful lot of abuse. It could be something that might not be as obvious, but then it does give the opportunity for that residue there, for that to be something that mold could grow on.
And the last question is, how often, in a situation like this, that obviously it's been repetitive, the problem, how often are you going to test that building?
So last year we were doing it, I think it was every two?
Once a month?
First speaking of every month. Right.
Okay, and have you graphed that out to find out whether it seems to be going down the problem? Or is it staying the same, is it going up?
I think overall, we've had really good results. I mean, there have been oftentimes when that benchmark measurement from outdoors is actually higher than what we'd find indoors. And so I would say it's, you know, just like.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if we take a look at that on a month?
To see if there's a trend?
Find out, you know, what are we doing these three months that might have made a difference? Or, you know, do we need to make a change?
Well, and I think we can get some false positives, just because of, you know, what can be caused by those humidity levels. So in the middle of winter with all of the heat on, you're far less likely to have those kinds of issues.
Thank you.
Mr. Rossi?
Thank you both for being here. I guess I have more globally concerning questions in regards to various schools throughout the district that have projects going on. And will those schools be able to open on time? Will they be safe? What should parents know about construction-wise in terms of drop-off, pickup? And I think if any school is in jeopardy of not being able to open on time, then we need to get that message out to parents as soon as possible. And if you guys could just talk about any of the buildings, I know across the street from my house, they're doing a ton of work, and it's beautiful, and the Robinson, they're on the roof at the McCullough, but it still doesn't look like all of those trucks and equipment are going to be out of there before Monday and when the kids are supposed to return to school. So if you could just talk to that aspect, I'd greatly appreciate it, thank you.
Sure, so I think our goal is to look for a substantial completion. They call these, these summer jobs, summer slams, and some of what we've, the challenges we've faced this year, besides the fact that we have the ongoing construction with the high school, is we have two MSBA years for the ARP programs going through in the same summer. So there's an awful lot of work that's happening at the same time. I think overwhelmingly, we're in really pretty good shape as far as the way those projects are running. They've made great progress, they've, there have been not too many delays as far as materials are concerned. I think there's, of the roof projects, most are in really pretty good shape. I think the one that's lagging a little bit is the Shaughnessy School. But we were there again today and met, we were on the roof, we were with the OPM, met with the principal. A great portion of that roof is entirely complete. The standing seam sections are going to be getting worked on, are being worked on. So that's kind of a work in progress. So that one is lagging a little bit, but we've been, we've developed a plan as far as materials on the grounds or anything like that being stored. There isn't anything that is out on the ground that way. There won't be any areas where children would be for access up onto that roof. They're not in the building to gain access to the roof as far as those workers are concerned. And we're taking special consideration for areas like the CSA classrooms and working around different schedules and knowing the areas of the building that we can work in without causing a disturbance. I guess to put it in perspective, it's worth thinking about what the high school is going through over the course of many years. Where in some cases, we're doing work on one side of a wall that could have a bobcat while a math class is going on the other side of the wall. So I think Mr. Fiatto has faced far more adversity than what we're seeing at any of the ARP schools as far as any kind of delay or interruption.
Delay with any of the schools due to the construction?
No, no, we don't anticipate a delay.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Lay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hey, Mr. Bahu, I apologize, I didn't mean to speak on your motion before. I forgot about, you have a motion on Patataville, sorry about that. Anyway, how about the Jean-Doc School? Are we ready to have it ready? I noticed that a couple of weeks ago when we had a tour, I noticed there were some debris and there were some weeds around the building. Just want to confirm that it's ready to go, thank you.
Superintendent?
So, well, actually, just conferring with Rick a little bit. So I know that we've been pulling that together for the convent building and for the use there, the occupancy permit.
We'll be picking up the occupancy permit tomorrow morning and meeting with Desi tomorrow at 8:00. Sprinklers have been updated, extinguishers have been updated, lighting has been updated. Emergency lighting to include emergency backup has been completed. So we're ready to go. Matter of fact, we started moving furniture in there today. So I have every bit of confidence that we'll be ready to accept those students next Tuesday.
Thank you, that's great, thank you.
So I just have one quick question before you back to Mr. Bahu.
Well, it might be multifaceted, but firstly, are all the boiler projects done? And the roof projects done that the MSBA was sort of funding for us? Have those been completed, other than what you just covered with the Shaughnessy School?
Yeah, so they're not completed, but they're, they're just about a substantial completion, is what they would call it. There's still work to do. The heating generally doesn't go on until about the first, second week of October. We don't anticipate there being any issues as far as having heat for the heating season. There is considerable work done there. There's a lot that we went through as far as the demo and the improvements. So it's really redoing the entire boiler room. So there are great improvements and conservation that will come from it. It'll make the heating plant so much more dependable at school. So it's a great thing that we're taking advantage of, for sure.
Okay, and I heard about the chillers that are sort of going into the Patataville Memorial School and such like that. I was speaking to the principal again, speaking to her today. And we were talking about the duct cleaning. And I think that was scheduled to sort of take place, but unfortunately it hasn't happened yet. So is there some type of schedule that we're sort of hoping that that can be done? For the duct cleaning over at the Patataville Memorial?
They've been there, I've actually seen their trucks and been there in the building with them. So I'll be happy to follow up with the principal and.
Please do, yeah, please, please. And then if we could kindly, I mean, I know that you send out mold reports on the Patataville Memorial regularly. Maybe us as a school committee should see it. So if we could, Rick, if you're, you know, conducting them monthly, could you maybe send them over to the school committee? Because, you know, the mold. Because, you know, the, the, the mold email I got today, you know, showed high in five or six of those classes, and that was clatusporium or something like that. So, it would be great if we could get that information so that, you know, when we're speaking to our constituents out there, parents, teachers, we could say, hey, we're getting mold reports and this is what we're seeing. And I see these mold reports are coming back high, they're not coming in with numbers or, or low or medium or rare. So, is there a way that we could sort of put a number to it, to identify it? Or is it just, or do they only report them as high and medium and low? How does that work?
So, the company that we used this particular time, it was my, my thought that we would go to a fourth party group, just because we had used EFI, EFI Global so many times, I just didn't want to let anybody think that there was some type of coercion going on that we've worked with. So, it was my, I said, all right, let's get a different company. So, we bought TRC. EFI Global had a, an actual count to it, so you, they would take an outside reading of mold spores, and then they would use that as the base guideline. And they would actually give us counts on each one of the, on the, on the different types of mold. So, for instance, if it was a humid day and the mold spores outside were a thousand, that was your baseline. And if you would go inside and it was 2,000 or 3,000, we knew we had a problem. This particular company, I really didn't know that that report was going to come in that type of structure. So, and I, and I was a little concerned with that too, where it really only said medium, high and rare. Rare to me made, right away, I was, I was concerned, rare, you know, is this some type of crazy concern? When I spoke to the company, rare was actually low levels. So, we, moving forward, I just found EFI Global's reports to be a little bit easier to understand. We're going to go back with EFI Global's to have them come in and do the equality testing. They're going to be doing it tomorrow. And then every month, on the first week, like I mentioned, we'll continue to do those like we did last year. And when those reports come in, the same day I get them, I send them to the superintendent's office, Jim Hall's office, UTL, and all of the staff and the principal. So, there's no, you know, no misunderstanding that we're, you know, we're sitting on anything. When I get them, I send them out. And they're just a much easier report to read.
Great. Could you include the school committee on that? Sounds like you've got everybody covered except us.
I, I can do that. I, I'm not sure if I did last year, anyway.
Could you?
I will, I will absolutely.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thanks. Thanks for all you guys do, we really appreciate it.
Just one question for Paul and Rick, if possible. So, do you expect all our schools, including the Patinkett Memorial and the high school, to open on time next week?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Rossi?
I just have one more last question on the Patinkett Memorial. Were all of those classrooms tested at the Patinkett Memorial or would that be part of the last?
Tested as far as the, the mold?
Yes.
It was, so, the places that we found that had any obvious signs of mold were in those classrooms, nowhere else in the school.
If we have a new company coming tomorrow?
Well, they'll be, they'll be taking air quality tests through the entire building.
And all the classrooms?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry, tomorrow's testing, sorry, I keep jumping up and running in, but tomorrow's testing will be just the, the areas that we identified mold into. So, how we came about testing those five classrooms is when we identified the two classrooms that we could visually see, we had the, the hygienist come in and do a visual inspection of the entire building. But it was only a visual inspection, it was, is under his recommendations which classrooms that we actually tested that day. As we're moving forward, we'll be doing every classroom in the building like we did last year. But just to be clear, tomorrow's tests are in those five classrooms.
The infected classrooms.
Yeah. If, if we do a lot, you know, there was concern whether we would have the test results back, so we're going on the recommendation of the hygienist that visited the school. Moving forward, we'll take it upon ourselves to do all the classrooms, like once a month. If I could just add to the schools that are going to be ready, all the schools will be ready. The Shaughnessy School, as Paul had mentioned, still has some work to do on the roof, but we did speak with, you know, we have a safety plan in place that we feel confident that we can run the school without any problems. And the same thing with the McCallum School. The McCallum School has some metal work, the roof is done, but the metal panels, because of some color issues and long, if we'd have went with the original color, we wouldn't have got them back till January, yeah, January of this year. Obviously, in the wintertime, not something we want to do. So, last minute, we changed the, the color of the seams to kind of match the best we could what was there. So, there'll probably be another prolonged month of that project. But again, much like the Shaughnessy School, we have a safety plan in place, we'll be monitoring the noise level. If there's any concerns with noise where the building can't function properly, we'll make plans to stop it and, and come up with a different plan. I have every hope and, and belief that we'll be able to run both those schools without any concern. To Paul, like Paul mentioned, we ran the high school with, you know, literally bobcats and machinery working next door and had to stop it just a couple of times for noise levels. This is far less of an impact on the school than what we dealt with at the high school. So, I'm confident we'll be fine.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you. I'd like to add a couple of comments, if I may. One about the Patinkettville Memorial School and the mold issue. In addition to the mitigation and the cleaning and the testing and so forth, I personally cannot allow staff or students in the building without consulting with the health director. So, I want to assure the committee and the public that I do consult with the health director, have done so since last year, and did so again, I think, Monday this week. And so, that, that's ongoing, just an assurance for people that we're, we're making sure that it's healthy. A second comment, if I may. There have been more projects going on as, in, in our buildings this, this summer, capital projects. At the same time, we've had more summer school programs than ever. Custodians deserve a word of appreciation because they take such pride in their schools and such pride in the thorough cleaning that they do throughout the summer, and it's been a nightmare for them, right? Programs in their buildings as they're trying to clean, dust and dirt from projects coming in and out, and they have been really terrific about it. And when, schools that I visited in the last week or so have been spanking clean, and custodians, I just feel deserve a lot of credit. The other comment, I think it should be obvious, that a lot of projects going on, I think, is a reflection of the collaboration that we have with the city these days. And in past years, we would be complaining and concerned in the wintertime when boilers are out, when there are leaks in roofs and so on, and that was due to many years of these kinds of projects not being done. And now we're catching up, and thanks to the collaboration, Paul and Rick and the city manager and so forth, these projects are funded by MSBA, and yes, it's difficult and we worry about the opening of school. But the bigger picture is, a lot is happening to benefit the city and the schools, and we appreciate that the capital projects are being caught up on. Thank you.
Because we have three motions, seven one, seven four, seven seven. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion is passed. Thank you, Mr. Underwood and Mrs. Sincere. Seven two, from Mr. Conway, request superintendent, a spotlight on excellence to highlight the various initiatives across the system that are in place to address bullying, harassment and violence. As well, please contact District Attorney Mary Ryan's office and invite them to present an official session on this matter for our middle school students, seconded by Ms. Martin, Mr. Conway.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you to the superintendent. You know, we have a new fresh year, and we also, how many, how many ninth graders do we have coming in? Maybe 700 or?
At least 900.
900?
Yes.
Okay, okay, around 900. So, they're new to that environment, and I'm wondering whether, you know, parents obviously are very concerned about the bullying and the harassment or violence too. But I think that what I'd like to see is that if we have some type of a spotlight on excellence, showing that what we, what we actually do in the schools, so that we can address bullying, and that let the parents know and the students know that if there is some form of bullying, these are the steps that you, you take to, you know, who do you contact? Who do you let know that there is certainly a problem? And especially too, the cyberbullying, that obviously is a major problem. And if you take a look at it, it's a major problem nationally, and you see the numbers going up, creeping up every single year. And that's something that, you know, we have, it's very, very difficult to, to figure out how to handle that, because a lot of that can come in school, but it also at home too. But I think you'll find, if you look at the data, and I'm not going to go through all the data with you, but you'll see that it affects attendance, obviously in a negative way. And needless to say, grades are affected on that, and I think what's even more important than the attendance and the grades, but is also the, the mental health of the child. Because as you see, that sometimes they just don't know where to go, what type of escape, and, and sorry to say, but some of them go to the, you know, to the point of suicide or whatever. So, what I'd like to do, and especially, again, you take, you take freshmen that are coming into an environment like that, that's a big, that's a big school. I mean, I remember being there as a freshman, and it's like, wow, this is unbelievable. I mean, you don't know how many floors there are, you don't know whatever, and now all of a sudden, somebody starts bullying, and right away you go, I, I don't want to, I don't want to come here. And before you know it, you take a look, and that student, we've lost that student, sometimes for the whole year. So, I'd like to see some type of, again, a spotlight of excellence. I'm sure that we do a lot of good things, but this might be a great opportunity to let the public, let the staff, let everyone know how we're, how we're handling the situation. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. Seven point three, Mr. Bahu, set up a joint subcommittee, set up a joint subcommittee, budget subcommittee with the Lowell City Council to discuss the financial audit of the business office, as well as considerations of combining some departments, seconded by Ms. Martin, Mr. Bahu.
I've been being contacted by a number of city council members about discussing the consideration of maybe merging some departments, as well as to discuss the financial audit. So, this is just a motion to go ahead and get the subcommittee approved, so that we can meet with the city council and begin a process of discussing these opportunities.
So, do you chair the financial committee?
Luckily, I do, yes.
So, just contact the chair of the city council, want to set it up, right?
Sure, yes, but I, I know I had to do it on the council floor to set up a meeting.
Approval. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. Seven four, we've already done. Seven five, by myself, request superintendent to present the school committee with options and possible cost savings to bring school transportation in-house, seconded by Ms. Martin. Very quickly, Mr. Superintendent, just to look at it, I know the troubles that we're going to have, not only this year, but going forward with our current vendor and the dearth of school bus drivers, so does any way, you know, it's not a money-making thing we're looking at, we're just trying to provide safe, reliable transportation to our kids. And if we can do it in a different way than we're doing it now, I think it's worthy to take a look at.
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. Seven point five, by Mr. Rossi, request superintendent to report on the status of hiring of tutors for the 2024, 2025 school year, seconded by Mr. Lay and Mr. Rossi.
Yes, I've heard a lot of the tutors have not heard anything permanent of coming back to their school, and a lot of them have been nervous, not knowing what's actually going on. So, I was just wondering if there, if there's a report or even a verbal report that you could give, if there's going to be a reduction of tutors, or if we're still going full steam ahead with tutors from prior years?
All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. Seven, 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 already done? Yes, Mr. Lay.
Do you want to answer some of the question, Mr. Superintendent, or?
I'm happy to.
Sure.
I do have a comment too. People ask me.
So, raise your hand when you want to speak, have a comment. There you go. Mr. Lay, go ahead.
Thank you. Because people have asked me about how to become tutors, so, so that fit perfectly on this motion, if you could just explain that as well. Thank you.
Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I go in backwards order here. To, to become a tutor, you apply for a tutor opening, they're posted on the school department's website, and anyone who's at difficulty finding them can reach out to us in the HR department, and we'll be happy to, to help them with that. Tutors are invaluable. I don't have numbers to give tonight in answer to it, but I can respond, this goes back to my time as a school principal, this is a perennial concern because the tutors, many of them, the most of them, are paid for through grant funds that is not confirmed until August. And while every year it comes through generally, and every year we then hire back the tutors, you can't promise them until you have the funds, right? And so, that's the holdup. They typically don't start till the Monday after Labor Day or something like that, so it's another couple of weeks even after the school opens. But, but it is difficult for them, they have to wait and hold out, and we don't confirm for them because we don't have the funding confirmed. When we do, we move forward.
Anything else, Mr. Lay? Awesome, great. Seven eight, by Mr. Rossi, request superintendent to collaborate with the proper departments to extract proper reading and math student performance levels in order to begin to implement a stronger cohesive reading and math curriculum most practical to our student population. Seconded by Mr. Conway, Mr. Rossi.
Yes, I've heard a great deal from teachers about how our reading curriculum is very disjointed and how the math curriculum is, you forget what the math problem is by the time you finish reading the direction, right? And so, in terms of the reading program, there's a lot of different supplemental reading programs that are with the Lucy Culkins. So, I just feel like even if we have more teachers on waivers or so forth, something easy and systematic across the district to begin to implement in both reading and math for our students, that, that's more practical to our student population here in Lowell. Thank you.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. Seven nine, by Mr. Lay, request the approval of the committee to call for a school improvement and performance management subcommittee meeting and invite Aramak Food Services Director to the meeting to discuss food services in schools. You have a motion response that's on tonight, would that kind of help with this motion, Mr. Superintendent, or will it go to school lunches? Seconded by Mr. Rossi.
I guess I'd, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Lay, maybe what we should comment on it, it is, there is a report in the packet tonight from Aramak, and that might go some way towards answering your motion, Mr. Lay.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Superintendent. I, I think that this is the beginning of the year, and I, I do want to have a, a subcommittee meeting on, on, on this food services, and like to invite Aramak Director to, to come in and explain to us a little bit more detail, you know, speak to her personally and, and be able to have some question answered. So, with the committee's approval, I just would like to ask for having a, a time where she's available to come in and speak to us.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. Motion to report to the superintendent, facilities update, we've taken care of that. Eight point two, superintendent goals report. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. School committee members, you have in your packet a, a report on goals from the past school year. There are two types of goals. There were five that were individual goals of the superintendent, and then there were a series of strategic goals that we worked on as a, as a district team. The report is there, I'd be happy to speak about it further or take any questions.
Okay. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, eight point three, motion response to Mr. Rossi. October 18th, 2023, we got a handicap parking at McCall School. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you. Again, the report is in the packet, and I'll be happy to take any questions that you have regarding that.
Yeah, it's just the one, it's the, not the handicap signs on the right side coming down, the parkway there, it's the one on the left, it has a lot of tree overhang around it, and those lines need to be painted again, so they're brighter. I think I took a picture of it, and I'll try to get it to you. If not, I will take a picture, but it's definitely those trees need to be cut back and that line, the white lines need to be clearer. Thank you.
I'd like to call back, Mr. Sincere, but we have assurances from DPW that this will be attended to for the start of the school year. Thank you.
Eight point four, motion response, dumb, Mr. Lay. November 15th, 2023, we got a transportation. Mr. Lay, anything?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Superintendent, for not forgetting about this. this motion. I, I do have a few questions on that as well, on the, on the, this report as well. The, the number given, 1,441 elementary school students taking the bus, and 1,846, are they including charter schools as well for this number? And I'm just curious, how, I guess, even though the report's saying you cannot, you cannot give the report on the percentage of students taking the bus, but I, I thought that maybe in a few steps, you would be able to do it, just to see how many, what percentage of students are actually qualified to take the bus, actually took the bus.
Thank you, Mr. Lay. If I may point out, I think from the report, you can glean much of what you're seeking. The numbers you refer to on the front page are the numbers of students who are not eligible with transportation. And so they add up, between elementary, over 1,400, and the middle school, overall, there are roughly almost 3,300 students in, in elementary and middle that are not eligible. And the total number of students in those schools is approximately 12,000, so.
Right.
Right?
It's just, yeah, I wasn't looking for, maybe just, I look at it and I hear the number.
Right.
I don't have to actually get this number and get my calculator.
Understood.
And do the computation to get the answer. So on that report, on the second page, the regular, what does that mean?
So this report, Mr. Lay, only counts for the regular, regular school students, not, there is a separate issue with special education students that qualify for special transportation, that this report does not include those.
Okay. And, and, sorry, one more question, maybe I, I go and talk to you one-on-one, but so the percentage underneath the school, in the, under that column, is that the percentage of students taking the bus?
Yes, Mr. Lay. If we look at the Bailey School, for example, enrollment at the Bailey School was 454 students. Of those 454, 237 avail of bus services, and that's 52%.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate the report.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just very quickly, I, I wanna thank the Chief Operating Officer for putting this together. When I took a look at it, and I found out that, you know, this, this safety committee they have meeting, that's structured in place at this point, is done on a monthly basis, you know, and I, listen, any, any situation that we do, it's gonna make things safer, that's fine, you know, I'm obviously behind it. The, I am a little disappointed that we certainly didn't put the, reinstate the safety task force, because it wasn't done, safety task force was not on a monthly basis, it was on a weekly basis. And it was done primarily with the school department, so that we were always on top of situations, and we stopped a lot of things happening, not just at the high school, but also all over the place, because there was a, and there was quite a exchange of ideas and solutions. And I, I think that that might be missing here, but, you know, apparently the powers to be didn't think that it was that important at this particular time, but hopefully in the future, and I'm sure I'll be bringing it up again. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Conway, I want to assure you that there's nothing more important to us than the safety and security of students.
I agree, too.
The, the final paragraph of the report refers to Captain Penrose from the police department, who's housed at the high school, and it may be, we could be clearer, Captain Penrose and the, there are three additional SROs at the high school, they interact with the staff, and particularly the house staff, each day. And so in addition to monthly meetings with the larger department meetings, they interact each day, and that is also true of SROs in middle schools.
Thank you.
Eight points, we'll take eight point six and eight point seven together, since Miss Doherty's not here. Follow-up response by Miss Doherty, April 3rd, 2024, regarding Lowell High School's security. Eight point seven, motion response by Mr. Conway, for, April 3rd, 2024, regarding safety and security. Mr. Conway?
Yeah, again, you know, what I was asking for is that we would have a, an audit done of our system, to, you know, assess what we can do to improve. And when I saw something on here that, that kinda stuck out, it says here, the Lowell Public Schools completed a district-wide safety assessment in 2016, which I applaud, but we're in two, we're, we're not in 2016 now, we're talking about a few years after. And within that period of time, there's a lot of changes that can take place, and that there are situations that I think that we could grab onto, and I think make our system, our schools and so forth, a safer place. And it's what they call subject matter experts, and that's what I was looking for to bring in. But, and I, and I appreciate the proposal for the RFP. At this particular time, I don't know if my colleagues would go along with it or not, but I'd like to make that, that motion that we go forward with this proposal for an RFP.
Is there a second? From Mr. Rossi? Any other questions or comments? So the RFP, Mr. Superintendent, what's the, what are we looking at for cost and time, time-wise?
I hesitate to say this, but I'm obligated to give you advice, and you can vote, and we will follow the school committee's vote in all cases. I don't believe an audit is warranted at this time. At, at any time, we will take care of safety issues. If, if, if something costs very little, and has a great benefit for safety, I think we'll all agree to do it. If something costs millions of dollars, and has very little benefit for safety, I think we'd say it's not worth it. What we're talking about is somewhere in the middle, and the school committee, I think, can make a choice whether it's warranted to spend the money. Worcester Public Schools did such an audit relatively recently, it cost over $300,000. And that's not including the advising that they recommend, that the company recommended that Worcester Public Schools continue to spend on that. So if we were to conduct the audit, and if we're to cost in the hundreds of thousands of dollars, we would be, we would have to find considerable savings from the current budget.
But, Mr. Mayor, through you to the superintendent, you do not have to put the entire, you know, you can do it in stages also, which I think that's what, that's what a lot of school systems do, so they just don't jump in and do everything all at once, because it can get kind of expensive. But I think that, because even, even if they came up with a number of different things that we should be doing, we probably are not gonna be able to handle all of that at, at the same time. However, if we do incremental stages there, I think that we probably could. So that's up to the, the body of the school committee, if they wanna, if they want to, fine, if they don't, that's fine.
Respectfully, though, that's not the RFP process.
Sorry?
That's not the RFP process, what you're suggesting, to piecemeal it, it's either, you know, either you're in or you're out with the RFP.
Well, I think a, a company can come in, when a company comes in, and I, I'm sure that the company will make that suggestion, that it, you don't have to do everything at once.
Right, but I think, in the current form, Mr. Superintendent, just the baseline for an audit, you're talking over $300,000?
We.
Will you get into any suggestions of what needs to be done, or something like that?
We know, we know that the audit in, in Worcester costs over $300,000. I don't know what that would be equivalent to in Lowell, but it's in that ballpark, I believe.
So you're saying it's just gonna cost $300,000?
I specifically said something different, Mr. Lay, Mr. Conway. I said to you that it costs $300,000 in Worcester, and that that does not necessarily mean what it would cost in Lowell. I can't.
Well, I'm sure we can identify another school system that might have spent a million dollars, too. But again, I'm, I'm looking at it, and, and if we could go by, by steps, but again, if, if people don't wanna do it, that's fine.
May I make one other comment, please? In, in the past, when we've considered these, such items, and when the, the audit was done in 2016, we didn't have a safety coordinator. We've hired a safety coordinator, whose sole job is to provide for safety in schools, not on her own. She works with the police department, she works with NEMLEC, she goes to trainings, the police department goes to trainings and advises. They conduct audits throughout the school year, unannounced audits when the schools aren't expecting them. So a lot of those other features are in place, and I think that, as my, my own guidance is that a different audit is not warranted. If the committee votes for one, we will accept that vote, and we'll work on it.
Right. Mr. Mayor, we have a motion on the floor?
Yeah, I'll say one more thing, you know, I'm confident in our police department, and our safety enforcement officers that we have here, and, you know, are we perfect? No, but other than a rare incident here and there that, you know, will be addressed, I think later on, by another response for, from Mr. Conway, you know, $300,000 is an insane amount of money to be spending at this.
Well, as I said, I think we can, we can argue all night long, it didn't necessarily be $300,000.
Right, but the way you're arguing it is not the RFP process, though.
Okay, but is there a motion on?
Roll call.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Miss Doherty? Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
No.
Mia Rourke?
No.
Mr. Bahu?
No.
Three A's, three K's, one F.
Eight point eight, motion response by Mr. Conway, from April 17th, 2024, regarding Park Ave East. Mr. Conway?
Yeah, thank you, and I, and I appreciate the, the report. Again, that area, you see cars, they're going, they're really going like a bad out or whatever, but, and, and again, you've got, you've got a number of schools right in that area, so whatever we can do, you know, they're talking about putting the 25 mile per hour speed limit, put those signs up, anything else, I think, could be very helpful going forward. Thank you.
I got about 10 left in my office, Mr. Conway, I can take a couple the way home, if you like.
What's that?
I got about 10 signs left in my office, can take a couple home, if you like.
Thank you, I'll, I'll take a couple.
You got it.
Are you charging?
No, free charge, free charge. Eight point nine, response to motion by Mr. Lay, on May 1st, 2024, regarding school lunch. Talked about this a little bit earlier, you wanna talk about it again? All right. Eight point 10, motion response, Mr. Conway's, June 12th, 2024, regarding student incident. Mr. Conway?
Yeah, again, thank you very much, I appreciate the report. And I hope that, you know, the student involved, Mr. Superintendent, did get some help, as far as the bullying, because apparently that was something that came out in the report from, from, you know, from the news report, too, that the child was bullied. So I hope that that has been rectified, and that, you know, any of the help that might be needed, she would have got that. All right? Thank you.
Good. Eight 11, response from Mr. Conway, July 25th, 2024, regarding cellphone policy update. Mr. Conway?
Yeah, thank you very much, I appreciate that. I'll tell you, I, I'm very happy to see the way the cellphone project is going at this point. And I would imagine, being in that environment for a number of years, it can be, it can be difficult, and we really have to stay on top of it. But I think what's very important, many of the students, really, you know, they were kinda kicking and screaming, but however, I think, I think many of them really are very happy with it, and I think the staff, too, so it does give a bit of a break. Plus the fact is, we were talking about, you know, time on, on learning, well, with, with cellphones in there, that wasn't working very well at all. So I'm glad to see that we're going in a, in a very positive direction with that.
Thank you.
Agreed. Eight 12, response to motion by Mr. Conway, July 25th, 2024, regarding Middlesex Community College, UMass Lowell partnerships. Mr. Conway?
Thank you, I'll make it very quick. As I've said many, many times, partnerships are so very, very important. And through you to Mr. Superintendent, what, I mean, I, there was a great list of a, a lot of different partnerships that we have. Is there any, any partnerships that is, should we say, in the embryo stage between the, you know, I'm talking about a new partnership that, that we might be looking at, that we can certainly celebrate, look forward to celebrating?
Thank you, Mr. Conway. Yes, first, I, I, we, we appreciate the opportunity to, to report on this, because we agree with you, these partnerships are key. We, we talk about Lowell being a city where you can go from pre-K to, to doctorate, you know, with, between our partnerships at Middlesex Community College, and with the university. On the ones you talk about, sort of embryonic ones, they, we have a new partnership with Middlesex Community College, to enroll paraprofessionals and custodians in associate degree classes, with a pathway to get degrees, and including teacher certification eventually. It happens that one of the champions is in the audience today, Pina Maggio, who has been really thick and urgently behind this initiative, and got, got it over the line. So thank you to Ms. Maggio. The other is that there are, there's a large, a huge push on early college, which is also supported by the state, and we've enrolled more students in early college programs over the last several years, year on year. And we're very hopeful that will be the case again this year. This year, however, the new part of the partnership is that the Lowell High School students participating in early college classes with Middlesex will take them at Middlesex. And so that's been a nice addition to, to what we're doing there. Otherwise, I can just say that there are sometimes so many synergies between the university, Middlesex, and Lowell Public Schools, that we can't capture all of them. After this report went to you, I met a teacher from Lowell High School, who was teaching also a program at UMass Lowell, and who told me about the work she's doing with her students in, in both places. There, there's really some wonderful opportunities for our community in the collaboration.
Well, Mr. Superintendent, that's why I think it's important, sometimes we, we gravitate to the negative, and in something like this here, this is something that we should celebrate. When we have a, when we have a strong partnership, or we're in the process of developing a partnership, again, I would love to see that, because these partnerships obviously help out our, our students, certainly for the most part, and our staff, and, you know, and that's, I think, one of the reasons why we had something like the Spotlight on Excellence, so that we could magnify that, and let everyone know that there's some good news going on, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Eight 13, motion response, I'm sorry, Mr. Lay, go ahead.
Thank you, sir. I just want to take this opportunity to also add to what Mr. Superintendent just said, is that our state legislature have passed the law that if you live in Massachusetts, and you haven't got a degree yet, you could go to any community college for free. Even, they pay for tuition, they pay for enrollment fee, they pay for books and stuff like that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Eight 13, motion response from Miss Doherty, July 25th, 2024, regarding assistant principal hiring practices. That report is on file, and I'm sure if Miss Doherty has any questions or concerns, she'll make those known. The motion to accept the reports to superintendent, eight one through eight thirteen, reports of progress by Mr. Conway, seconded by Ms. Martin, all in favor, say aye. Approve, motion passes. Nine, new business, nine point one, request approval and permission to post POG stipend positions. The motion to approve by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Rossi, roll call.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Miss Doherty? Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin? Mia Rourke?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Six A's, one F.
Nine two, request approval of doctoral research proposal. The motion to approve by Mr. Lay, seconded by Mr. Bahu, roll call.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Miss Doherty? Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Mia Martin? Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mia Rourke?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Six A's, one F.
Approval to accept and expend allocated FY25 awards, the motion to approve by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Conway, roll call.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Miss Doherty? Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin? Mia Rourke?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Six A's.
Nine four, approval to accept and expend grant from the Cummings Foundation, motion to approve by Mr. Bahu, seconded by Mr. Rossi, roll call.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Miss Doherty? Mr.
Nine four, approval to accept and expend grant from the Cummings Foundation, motion to approve by Mr. Bahu, seconded by Mr. Rossi, roll call.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Rourke?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Six a's.
Nine six, home education, the motion to approve home education by Mr. Conway, seconded by Ms. Martin, roll call.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Rourke?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Six a's.
Motion adjourned by Mr. Conway, seconded by Mr. Bahu. Good night.